This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
8:20 19 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30. To. Aye. We'll start with our consent agenda. First, the minutes. Any... Any... What are we doing? One at a time, right?
Yep. You don't have to consent each. You can go through and then consent.
Right. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 12?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved. Now, we have retirement of Patricia White, the science program coordinator. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Well, I'd like to thank her for her service. She's, you know, passionate about science.
She had a long time.
Indeed.
There you go.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Alright, so that passes. And now, we have the resignation of Diana Taperkas, North Haven High School science teacher. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. And then, we have a leave of absence for... Is that Brittany? Brittany Shabbat, North Haven High School teacher. I think she's asking for, what, a two-year? Is that what it... One-year leave of absence for... I need a motion?
Oh, so moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay. Are you using a stopwatch tonight, Brian?
You're wanting the clock?
(laughing) Moving right along. Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question now?
Yeah.
We're getting hit hard with science people leaving for retirements, childbearing, and whatever. Are they still hard jobs to fill?
Mm-hmm. We posted them in different places. We have two candidates. We were actually just talking with Dr. Galli today, and he does have two candidates ready to fill Diana's position, as well as Montewees.
Okay.
So, having approved each item, we don't have to approve the entire consent agenda, right? So, we are now at the student representative report. Zoe?
Hello. That was senior. Good to see you all. I don't have too many updates right now because I'm not in school, but I know I'm one senior now, so I'm getting ready, mentally prepared for that, college applications. And everyone's now really focused on college applications, getting their summer work done, and like getting testing done, and migrating and stuff, all for college, so, yeah. Yeah.
Good. So, we're at the report of the Board of Education chairperson or designee. I have no report from Anita, and I have none from myself, so we move on to unfinished business. Do we have any?
I had a question. I wanted to know how things were going, getting statistics, equity-based statistics.
So, we were talking with Jen Kaznuski about that.
Yeah.
And we'd love for you to come and sit with us and kind of give us a direction on some of the things you want us to pull, because there's a lot.
Okay.
And we sat down, some of the information you provided us with the Power School, and we could pull per class and whatnot, but if we wanted a certain direction, just focus on math, just focus on language arts to start, and then kind of methodically make our way through. But what do we want to see first? And what are you most interested in?
What I'm most interested in is making sure that our racial balance is that we have a proportional number of kids who are in our advanced classes, in our AP classes. I know that AP was pretty quick for her to pull, because it's a more... The scope is narrower.
It's tighter, yeah.
But I'm looking for a wider scope to ensure that, you know, if we don't have proportionality based on our student population as a whole, why is that? And what do we need to do in order to ensure that equity and make those spaces what they should be for all kids?
So, would you... Would it be okay if we took a little sampling of different spots and pulled that together? Or would you like it...
I think the only way to really...
Like, could we start with English, say?
Sure. You could start with that.
Because that's like, everybody has to take four years of it, so it would get... To me, it would give you a nice... Like, would give us a good picture. And then, we can look at the levels across English 10 and 11.
And I know that it's a lengthy process, but it's super important.
Yep.
It's everything, actually, in my opinion. So, I think that if we could start with English, and then, that'll give us a little bit...
Start, yep.
It also can provide us a little window on urgency versus, you know... So, if numbers come out a certain way, it's gonna be like, oh, no, no. We need to look at the rest of this right now.
Exactly. And then, we can move maybe into math.
Right.
You know, we know that everybody's accessing those courses, and we can look at the differences in levels, expectations, and that might be helpful.
Right. I think I would do that, but I just want to make sure that if there is a disproportionality, what is the reason behind it? Because it's not necessarily because kids can't perform. There may be another thing that's a softer skillset that we need to look at.
May I say, I'd like to... I'm very interested in like the Level 1, because I know there's times when I've walked into classes, Level 1 or the lower, and it's 50% special ed students. I've always worried about that.
Right.
Okay. I guess that's all I have for that.
Any other questions?
I do have one other question. I know that Dot had brought up at the end of last summer about getting fans for the elementary schools. And I'm just wondering if you have any capital projects in mind?
Oh, fans. I thought you said sand.
Oh, no, fans. Sorry. Enunciate better. Fans for the classrooms during the hot, early summer month... Late summer months, when they start school and when the students are finishing. So, I'm just wondering... I'm thankful that the fans are in, and I think that they will help. But I'm wondering if there's a longer-term capital improvement project that we should start talking about? Or is that probably not in the cards?
Well, we did the... Yeah. We did the... To do the air conditioning for the major, and that came out to a pretty significant amount of money for even just doing the gymnasium in the libraries... Uh, sorry, the gymnasium. And I think the libraries are done in every building. I think it was just a gym, make sure they had a general area to go into. Other than that, and the fans, it's... I'm not sure how much further we could move with that.
The reason why I'm asking is because last year, at the start of the year, there were a lot of half-days that were called for the safety of students, which I think is the right thing to do, but it does also put stress on parents who have to kind of run around and find solutions for this. And I'm just not sure if... We've definitely put on appropriate Band-Aids. I'm just not sure how long those Band-Aids are gonna help us, you know?
And we also have to look at the age of our buildings in the elementary, too.
Yep.
That's a big Band-Aid to put on at St. Ridge, which is a 70-plus year old building. So, it may be start... Time to start planning bigger in the future as well. Building these as opposed to just little areas.
Yeah.
Have anybody talked to Chartwell about not turning on the ovens if we're having a heat wave, disco with cold lunch in the elementary schools?
Sushi.
Or ice cream. Because I'll tell you, I was very... Because I walked those four elementary schools, and I was upset. I was... Matter of fact, I was more than upset. I was furious, because I went in and I talked to every cafeteria lady. And so, there was one who I've known for 20 years. She didn't look well, and she had come in early in the morning to start some of the hot lunch. And I'm thinking, it's 110 degrees in here. That's what it felt like. And I said, who would... Who would... I felt we were a sweatshop. And these are not people that are making a lot of money.
And you're heating up a space. You don't need to be heating on top of it so it's getting hot for everybody else.
And they're not air-conditioned. All they have is, you know, a standalone fan.
I think legally speaking, you can't expect people to work under certain conditions. I think there's legal constraints about how odd it can be in a place where people work.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the school year, I know the elementaries, when they're cleaning up, they do what? Hot... I mean, cold lunch, bag lunch for about three days or three or four days.
Yes. Some bear jelly.
I don't care what you call it. Just don't open the oven... Don't heat up the ovens.
I'll talk to Sal Rosso Rodari. Make sure he spreads it out to his staff.
Well, I was gonna say, the other thing is, last year, we knew... We knew the week before that the heat wave was gonna hit. And it hit, and it hit exactly when they said it was. And the other thing I know about the schools is if you get a heat wave on Monday... Monday morning's not too bad, but by the time you walk in... Well, you know.
They're built like fortresses, and they keep everything in.
Yeah.
And the windows don't open the way you'd like them to open, and so, yeah.
Can't leave the doors open anymore?
No, we can't.
Yeah. And I understand that, so...
So, I'm not sure whether this discussion is unfinished business or new business, but we're at new business. I think we're sort of straddling both. So, do we have any new business? Okay. So, we're at our standing committee reports basis.
He says, next meeting is September 12th. We don't meet during the summer.
Now, CNI, I believe I was not at the last meeting, or did we report that hour?
We reported the last one out, but we didn't meet in the summer.
And we haven't met since.
Right. But we'll meet in September.
Finance and Operations? Finance and Operations met earlier this evening, and I just want to recognize Pam for coming in midstream during the budget season, and she got us almost to a break-even spot at the end of the year. So, thank you for that with all the changes going through her finance office. We are concerned going forward, because there are changes with some of the accounts, and as everybody's getting comfortable with things. And I want to recognize Jen for stepping in now for the Director of Special Ed. So, again, as everybody's learning, we're just watching accounts closely as we're starting the beginning of the year. Okay. Any questions for...
How's the insurance looking?
Insurance, we're well. We did well.
We're well.
We're positive a little bit.
Okay.
But in a minute, that can change.
Yep.
So, that's why we don't want to...
Jinx it.
Right.
Don't look the gift horse in the mouth.
Or speak it aloud.
Other questions for Finance? Okay. Goldie, Middle School Building Committee?
Committee meets Monday, and they're actually gonna be meeting at the middle school so they can take an assessment... They can do an assessment of the gym floor.
Floors.
Yeah. That's the major project that they're working on right now. So, they met two weeks ago or three weeks ago, but they didn't have anything on the agenda that was just signing off on, you know, approving invoices pretty much. But next week, the meeting is to... It's gonna be at the middle school. At 8:15 in the morning, next Monday.
Any questions for Middle School?
Will the gym floor be done by the opening of school?
That's the... That's the plan.
That's the question.
Yeah. That's the plan. But I don't know... They haven't provided an update yet.
Okay.
But that's why they're actually gonna meet at the middle school so they can actually see what the progress is, you know? But John hasn't... Gary hasn't shared any information as to what the update is. Do you know anything?
Phil's been speaking to the Assistant Foreman, and it's gonna be very tight. They're working hard to get it done, but... It's a little... I don't know if we'd say it's behind, but it'll be tight, Kenny, at the time.
Yeah. Construction projects are always gonna...
And that's a pretty big one, I think.
Yeah. Anyway, you look at the gym floor, you think it's easy, just pull the wood out.
Pull it up, pull it down.
Yeah.
But Phil is... We'll be at the meeting on Friday as well, just to make sure they're good, we're ready to open.
Education Foundation?
They meet next Wednesday. 'Cause I have nothing right now.
So, policy met tonight. We continued working through the shipment and Goodman policies. And we have two policies that we're bringing forward tonight for your first read. And I guess we await your responses.
And one...
On those.
The fingerprinting one is actually an update of the update we just did in June. As soon as we finish the update in June, the state sent out a brand-new one. And so, it's new. And so...
Their prints are all over it.
Yes. So, we left part of it highlighted so you could see the changes in it. But we'll work to... If there's no big concerns or questions around it at the next meeting, we'll work to make that our next policy.
So, do we take input now, or do we wait until the next meeting?
I think we would wait... This would be the first read until the next meeting either, so in case we haven't had time to review them.
Is that so for both of you?
Yes, for both of them.
Alright. PTA Council? Any discussion about the policies before you...
So, what we're doing is that we're just mirroring what the state requires.
For them. For those.
For those two ones.
The two of them, okay.
PTA Council?
We haven't met. Our first meeting will be in September, and it'll actually be after our next supportive meeting. So, I won't have an update next time either.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay. They pass. Staff Communications? We have a superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. So, just wanted to let you know earlier this evening, we had a little meet and greet for Jen Stewart and for Patrick Lawrence, our new Assistant Principal of the high school. A lot of the district administrators came out, and a few parents came out just to say hello. It was a nice little event. And it was good networking for Jen and for Patrick, but it was also nice for administrators kind of just to have some informal chats back and forth. So, it was a nice little event. The NEAS report for the high school is completed, and I'm very happy to say that we've been granted continued accreditation through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. That's great, great news. We've completed the first two phases of it, of the accreditation, the self-study, and the evaluation visit. The next step is for the high school to complete their valid recommendations. So, what the committee set forth for us to improve on, we're just giving them updates. There's one in October, and then, there's one in March of this upcoming school year. But what I did want to share is that there's just some notes of recognition that the committee shared with us. The instructional coaching and mentoring provided by the department heads was cited as recognizable. Give us some recognition for that. The department heads, they meant our coordinators, our program coordinators. Multiple opportunities provided to students to meet learning expectations over the course of their junior and senior years. The delivery of a written developmental program, regular meetings with students to provide personal academic career and college counseling. And later in the year, probably in November, I'm going to ask Becca Carr, who's the program coordinator for school counseling, to come in and present to all of us regarding some of the work she does with her department around college prep. The collaboration relationships between and among the Board of Education, the superintendent and administrators in many areas, including the support to make the One-to-One Chromebook initiative successful. Frequent involvement of teachers, students, and parents in meaningful and defined roles in decision-making, including the hiring process. And a clean and well-kept school facility, which provides an exceptional learning environment for teaching and learning. The full report will be posted on the website, and it will also be distributed to some news outlets if they'd like to post it as well. Boys and Girls Club? So, Boys and Girls Club is open in North Haven. It's very, very exciting. They've actually filled up... They're completely filled. I think they're...
No doubt.
Yeah.
And there's a waiting list of at least 20, from what I just heard from Carlos. So, wonderful. We will be providing transportation from the program in the morning to all of our schools, and from all of our schools to the program in the afternoon. So, I think that's a nice little collaboration. Carlos there, he's a very, very good man, and he's very communicative with us here at the board, so... I wanted to thank Banton Construction. They have made a generous donation to our transitional program. This past year, they were one of the job sites for our students, and they made a very nice connection with the students, as well as the faculty. They actually came to our transitional program graduation. So, the donation will be used to enhance the traditional partnership program. I just wanted to publicly thank them for their generosity and their time and efforts. Let's see. So, there will be primary elections this year. Two days, September 10th and April 28th this year. So, due to the influx of people in our building and unknown people within our building during school, I'm looking to close school on both of those days just to keep our kids safe, and we can make up those days in a couple of different ways. We have a February 21st Professional Development Day. We could switch that to that April 28th day. So, it does two things. It allows our families not to have to plan for two days of childcare. It just keeps them to one, and it would lessen an extra day added on it to the end of the year. So, we're comfortable with that. And then, keeping that September 10th day as a no-school day, just...
We can't play with that one, because November's an election day, too. So, normally, a PD.
So, if we're all comfortable with that, I can... Joyce and I will update the calendar. We'll get it out to families, and then...
Do we have to vote on that?
I don't. We're within the timeframe. We're not going an extra day or anything, so it's just really a change of days. It's almost treated like a snow closing, almost. But when we get closer to it, we'll have to... I think the final day of school ends on a Monday now, so we'll have to talk about graduation, if there's no snow and whatnot, so... And new to our agenda, or...
We'll keep you posted.
Sat up a little straighter there, huh?
She was like, wait a minute.
I was like, wait. Graduation, oh, wait, that's... That's gay.
And on our agenda this month, and for months to come, I've asked our interned Director of Student Services, Jen, just to present a report each month. This month, she's gonna talk a little bit about her department plan, and so, we welcome that. So, thanks, Jen.
No problem.
Alright. That's all I really have today.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? Alright. So, we are at Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Okay. So, we continue to monitor and watch the kindergarten numbers literally daily, sometimes hourly. At this point, Montewees and Green Acres are both on the cusp. We had talked about Montewees in particular of concern back in June, and then, they dropped again. And so, they were 58 this morning. They're now up to 59 as of 4 o'clock today. So, we're just really watching it, because four classes with 58 or 59 are almost a little bit too small. You know what I mean? We've gotta just keep our eye on it. They did interviews, though, so there's actually two candidates that they really like. So, we kind of have them in reserve right now. If we have these openings, either there or Green Acres, at least we've got some people lined up that we're really interested in. So, all I can say is we'll keep watching it. You know, we call, they text and email us as soon as they get another student, and we've got our eye on it, so... Tracy Kimbradella and Jody Wilcox, our elementary language arts and math coordinators, have been working hard all summer along with checking in with me around the elementary assessment calendar. And we've been able to make some tweaks to it to reduce some of the student testing. Oh, great. Yes. We're really happy about that. And this will provide more instructional time for teachers, take a few things off of the student assessment end. We have the Teachers College Institutes at the middle school. We hosted them, and they were actually a national kind of convention. People came from as far away as Texas. And the presenters from Columbia were so impressed with the work that's being done in the district. We actually had eight teachers volunteer and give up three days of their summer, We actually had eight teachers volunteer and give up three days of their summer, the week of 4th of July, to go and take part in this learning, which was great. And many of our principals, particularly Chris McLaughlin and Phil Piazza, who are new in their roles at the elementary, they were able to come in and pick up different pieces from the training. So it was really great. I was there all three days, it was excellent. Currently, we're in the process of going through our SAT and our S-Back scores, and we'll have more detailed information to share in the fall. I anticipate statewide data and growth target data to be released from the state in the next month or so, because that's really important to get a sense of like how we performed compared to other districts. And I know parents are sometimes wondering about the student reports. I anticipate that we will get them in districts sometime in September or beginning of October, and once we get them, it's usually about a two-week window that we can get them to the schools, and then the secretaries can do mailing labels and get those home to families. So hopefully by the September meeting, I'll have a little bit more information as it comes out from the State Department. And lastly, Mrs. Bankowski has made a really nice adjustment to the middle school, and she's been working closely with the two assistant principals over there. And one of the changes that they're putting into place, starting this year, is an additional set of parent-teacher conferences, which I think will be really well-received by teachers and parents. They used to only have them in the fall, but now they'll have a set in the fall and the spring, which will mirror the elementaries, which I think will be really nice to open up communication. And that's all I have.
Just one quick question. What is August 19th kind of the deadline to know about the kindergarten staffing levels and teachers, or like...
I don't know that we have a hard...
Yeah, I would hope it'd be earlier than that. That's real tight to bring someone in. But if we don't, if we get an influx of two or three kids, it's a Green Acres on the 19th, then we'll have to move forward then, but hopefully we have a better idea before that.
And you know, we have to be flexible and open-minded too, that even if it were the first day of school and all of a sudden eight kids register, we have to, you know, I mean, I know that sounds terrible, but we can't predict it, so you know, I know Montwies really, in terms of the physical things of the classroom, most of that is all set and ordered. So if we had to move it to another school, we've got materials and we're well-positioned there, so we just keep watching it. You just hope you almost get a lot all at once, it makes an easy decision, and then you can just plan for it, you know?
Right now, we're just getting trickles.
Yeah. And then we get up one, down one, you know, it's, but we've got our eye on it.
I do have a quick question about the coordinators looking to reduce student testing time in the elementary schools. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure. So, for instance, this is just one example, I don't have it right in front of me, but like in 4th and 5th grade, we give, it's called the Fontis and Pennella, it's a reading assessment to help us figure out levels that kids are reading at independently and instructionally. We're going to reduce some of the giving of that assessment to 4th and 5th graders who are already above benchmark. We know where they are, so instead of having them go through the tasks, again, they're almost hitting the ceiling, and so we're going to put our instructional time in a different way there. So that's just like a little example. There's some math assessment questions that mirror some of the iReady experiences that we have, that we were having them do on our benchmarks, so we can eliminate that, because we're getting the information to know whether the students have the skills, so we don't need to ask in a duplicate fashion.
That's great.
So, yeah, I mean, that's just like, there's a whole bunch of little ones, and they vary by grade, but we've tried to be really thoughtful about taking things off the plates of teachers and students if we can, so.
That's fantastic. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you. Director of coordinators.
Yes. Actually, do we have Jen's first?
Sure, I'll come.
That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
His fault.
First, I wanted to say I'm delighted and honored to be in this position. So thinking of the department, our department plan is going to encompass pre-K all the way through 21, because I think special ed, schools, like social workers, we are all under one umbrella. So our department plan is going to really focus on student instruction and moving our students along, using general ed assessments, really to, you know, target our students, and also making sure our IEPs are aligned to grade level standards, which are aligned to the curriculum. And we did some training and benefit training last year on how to write IEPs, and we had training, so I'm going to continue working on that and doing monthly samples to make sure our staff is consistent writing IEPs. But my biggest, one of my biggest things to share is to make sure our students are progressing and making growth, so when we have professional development and department meetings, the teachers are going to be coming together and looking at students and making sure they are moving along, and we're going to track it with data, and that'll help us plan for the following year. The other piece is communication and collaboration among staff, families, and students need to occur, and I'm open, like if parents need to, you know, come and want to sit and chat, I'm fine, because that's where you build those relationships, and the stronger relationships you have, the more it's going to help the student grow, and then it's going to help the parent grow, and then the teacher. So that's kind of how, that's like my philosophy. But I will come to every meeting, and I will give you an update just of special ed, student services in general. And if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer any of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions?
Actually, I have a question. At the high school level. I assume as the students get into their junior and senior year, the conversations are shifting more to the students with the parents' knowledge, but it's not the parents talking to the teacher then informing the student. So that the students are going to self-advocate and to plan for future, whether it be work environments or college environments.
Correct. So I'm a big proponent of transition. So right now, transitions should start in 6th grade, so the high school, we talk about transition. I did start a little of it in the 8th grade, so I would like to continue it, starting in 7th grade, so by the start of next school year, 6th, because it's really building their self-advocacy and planning for career, planning for college, and it's great when students come to their PPTs and they run their PPTs, because then they own their IEP goals and objectives and their accommodations, because when they go off to the workforce or college, there's no one there to support them, so they need to build that. So yes, I'm a big, you know, transition needs to start younger, and I think our students who are more cognitively impaired, it needs to even start at the elementary level, because transition is, it encompasses so much, so.
So just to piggyback off your thing about your philosophy about transition, what about transition? I know some school districts do transition fairs for juniors and seniors. What are your thoughts about that? Because I don't think we ever did something like that.
So I believe Becca Carr does, they do, like colleges and things come in to the school, but I don't know if the kids go to a job there for like all students, but are you just talking about special education students?
Special ed, yeah.
I'm open to it, I would just have to look into it and see how we could, you know, maybe have some businesses come to us, and I think that's where I would tie in with the counseling department, because when I worked at the high school, the special, like my staff and myself as a coordinator worked really close with the counseling department, so maybe we could buddy something up with that.
Yeah, because I know Branford does it, some other school districts around the state actually do it with the high school in Trumbull.
Trumbull High School?
Yeah, they usually do something, so it could be something, and it's more college-focused.
Okay.
So it's not, it could be like an after-hours thing, where you have, you know, colleges that typically are physiologists for your students.
Does Barbara Beeman run it?
I don't remember the name of the lady.
She's probably the specialist at the high school, the specialist.
Yeah, Trumbull, yeah.
Okay, I know her.
It's pretty common among high schools, not even just within the state and outside the state. So it's something that, you know, from the college perspective, you know, the sheer resources explain that transition reality, and then it's an opportunity for parents to connect with people in those colleges that actually do the work, you know, and then they also have, in some cases, they have businesses, some businesses, they have, you know, state agencies that work with students who are transitioning out of college, like BRS and the rest of them, you know, so it's usually a good experience for the, so it gives the parents an opportunity to know what's ahead, you know, so.
Okay, I just want to say, so we work with BRS, it's called Level Up as well, so junior year, we have our connections, and they come the spring of junior year, and any special ed student can go to this orientation, and they talk to them about, if you fill out all this paperwork, we can get you set up with a job in the summer, work on job shadowing, interview skills, and then if a student decides to do that, then they, a lot of them work in the summer, and then that work can continue in the fall, and then they actually follow up with them their senior year. So we do that piece of it, and I'd like to continue that. It's, I think, one of the hardest pieces is the students don't follow through, and then we don't get, you know, as many students as we would like, because they're pretty open to, you know, if we had 50 students do it, I don't think they would say no at Level Up.
Well, these ones are more college-focused, so students who are thinking about college or college-ready.
Okay, I'll look into it, and the next meeting I'll report back for you.
Okay, if you need more information, you can let me know.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
I have a quick question, because you said Rebecca Carr might come in and do a presentation. I'm wondering if when we get to close to budget season, if it would be good to talk about maybe expanding our guidance staff, if she feels, oh, it's not guidance anymore.
Counseling.
Counseling, okay. Expanding that staff. I feel like on the times that I've been, which has been, you know, several times over the past few years to the office, I feel like the guidance council, I'm sorry, student service council, those folks are sort of torn, because there's so many kids in crisis.
Yep.
And then, so that's a very, can be a very intense situation. And then there's parents who are very, very worried about their students and what to do next with college, and that's very intense. And I feel like it's a lot, if, it's just a lot on a few people, and I'm wondering if she feels comfortable when she comes letting us know what the needs are.
I can ask if it'd be part of...
Because if she says, "Listen, you know, we're doing what we can, and we're, you know, we're doing, we're giving it everything, but we're feeling like we're coming up a little bit short." I don't think there's any shame in that, and I would, as a board member, would like to know, can we advocate for that, if that's something you feel a budget season needs to happen?
I also think that, I think the department does a good job, as well as the high school administration is defining roles of these counselors. They are there to support for crisis, that's not only, that can't dominate all of their work, we have other supports there for that. So if it is maybe not adding an additional counselor, as far as college counselor goes, maybe it's adding an additional support.
Social worker, or something like that.
Yeah, something along those lines, so we can free up those folks to do more.
Whatever it takes, that would be, that would be up to you guys. But if you feel like you need more people, that's something that we should know, you know, as I really, I feel like that's got to be really tricky. And I often have felt guilty going in sometimes, because you walk through a crisis situation, and you're like, "Oh, I'm just here to find out," you know, if this is, they've got, and they're like, "No, no, sometimes it's good to have that kind of a meeting," but I just feel like it's a lot, and that's a huge job, and whatever we can do to help out, if she's comfortable with it, sharing that with us.
I was going to say, up to, what, about four or five years ago, we had a retired teacher from another district, Bob Iverson, who was part-time in the career right next to, and he took a lot of time working with students, looking at colleges. And when he re-retired, that program ended, and I think that was a big, just a big service, because everybody was very pleased with his work with the students.
And I think that also, if you, even somebody who would do that sort of a job could help bring us to the next level as far as applications, because there are just some parents who are just like, you know, they're swimming in it, and they're chasing their kids, the kids aren't following through, and there are some that just do it on their own, but others need that push, and if we're, I think that could help us get, you know, stay competitive also.
Do we know how many of our seniors actually get into college, or are looking at college, physical community college, or actually a four-year college? Do we keep data on that?
Guidance would have.
Okay, is it good? Because I'm thinking, have they been, like, what Jen is saying, have they been provided the right support resources and everything? You know, maybe they would be more interested if, you know, so I don't know, but I'm just asking if we keep that kind of information. That would be good to take a look at.
Yeah.
Yes, I could ask you. So a little bit of a different question. I attended an evening hours presentation on the SRBI process at Clintonville, probably two years ago. Do we do anything similar on the IEP process? Because that's one that, I found the SRBI process presentation so helpful, I thought it was like really well thought out, really well done, that everybody did a fantastic job, but I do think that there is some confusion around the IEP process, and it, I don't know if that's the right solution, whether to do that or just to put additional resources out there, but I do think that there's some confusion around that process.
Maybe some, like, parent handbooks and parent communication and conversations around the process.
What to expect from the process, like how to...
How does it, how do you navigate it? Is it like what happens when your child is referred, and then that whole process through all the PPTs and all the people, that piece of it?
I think that's a big piece of it. I just found that, you know, with the SRBI presentation, like I knew what to expect as a parent going through the process, and I think that there's a lot of confusion on the part of the parents maybe about the IEP process, and I think it would help everybody feel a lot better about the whole process if it wasn't mysterious. Not saying that it's mysterious now, but like, it would just be helpful to just have...
That's a lot of lingering charge.
Yeah, it's a lot, and it could be overwhelming, yes.
If they have a glossary of just, you know, what are PPTs, what that means.
One of these acronyms. Okay. What can you expect when you come into it?
Right, and to, for parents to realize when they walk into an IEP meeting, they're could be sitting with eight strangers, and that's talking to parents, that's the loneliest feeling in the world, because you have PTs, you could have an OT, you could have speech and language, you could have your regular ed teacher, I mean, it goes, cast of a thousand, you know?
Hopefully the regular ed teacher...
Yeah, the regular ed teacher.
Hopefully the regular ed teacher preps them a little bit. I try to do that, and say, you know, "Don't forget, there's going to be a lot of people," but it also, I think, parents don't anticipate sometimes how emotional that can be.
Especially if the test results are being...
Yes, it's a lot.
Even if the school personnel has met, and they know the results, when the reality hits, it can hit real hard.
So to know those things ahead of time may help?
Something that works under our communication base.
Okay. All right, Jen, Director of coordinators?
Yes, just a couple of things. We are evaluating and reviewing all our financial and operational processes, both internally and district-wide. We are also working to negotiate best pricing for things like custodial supplies, instructional supplies, as we move through this new school year. And as was mentioned earlier, our insurance claims are still running favorably at the moment, and we'll just leave it at that. Our 1819 fiscal year, we have closed out the year, we are now working through our opening conferences for any invoices that come up over the summer. We did provide the town with voluminous year-end information as they requested, and we will also start, actually, a few of us are working on Saturday, start on the state EFS report that is due by September 3rd, that's a very comprehensive report on all our 1819 expenditures that is part of the final audit as well. And then for the 1920 fiscal year, we have been reviewing all the accounts very carefully. We have found a couple of issues with accounts either funded in another line item, or perhaps not funded as adequately as they should have been, but we so far feel comfortable enough in mitigating whatever we have uncovered, so I think we'll be okay. It is going to be a tight year, but we will keep a very close watch on it, and we'll continue to report to you each month. And that's about it, thank you.
Questions? Can you just kind of expand a little bit? I saw that where you're saying that you noticed some things that were underfunded or not funded at all, like what sort of things?
Two items immediately. One was the adult ed tuition cost, that was $33,000 in the 1819 year, it's $34,000. And also the course requirement, course reimbursement, rather, contractual obligation for teachers, which I believe is at $30,000 this year. And there were a couple of other central office accounts, that printing and postage. I think honestly, what appears to have happened is I think there's plenty of discussion about funding them appropriately, and I think when the final information got into our computerized system, somehow or other, those accounts were not uploaded properly, and unfortunately, it doesn't look like there was enough due diligence done when they were comparing line items to line items, which quite honestly is a very natural progression before you finalize your budget. But you had a lot of people here, I think they were all trying to do the best they could in a short period of time. It was challenging, and I know it was for all of you as well.
That's an understatement.
I do realize that. So maybe because of that, we were taking a little closer look at the budget as well, because I do have concerns. When you inherit a budget that you haven't developed yourself, you're a little, I'm a little nervous, let's just put it that way, because you don't know what you don't know, and when you start to find a couple of items that were overlooked, as I said, I do feel that we're okay to mitigate them at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for public comments.
Thank you again. Mrs. Stewart, this is Monica Haddon. I set up the SNAP, the North Haven SNAP back in May, sorry. I'm so glad that you're here, special ed mom, my son is an autism. I love the partnership, what you're doing. I'm a member of the SAC, the State Advisory Committee, or Council, at the special need level, a member as well of the NAMI, so people, if you guys are prowling with anxiety, have a lot of the context. Where it brings me, what you're talking about, the partnership and the union, that's where I wanted to meet with you, the appointment that we're, you know, Joyce, we're on. Yes, it's to talk about the CAC. I'm pretty sure you heard about CPAC, that was the thing that I brought up from Virginia to the CPAC and say, "Where is the CAC in here? We don't have a special education advisory committee at the local levels." And so that's where it helps a lot, the parents to get trained locally about IEPs. That's what I've been doing through the SNAP, through the Facebook, trying to train the parents, explaining how is the IEP, how is the 504, it's not the same thing, what is ready, you know, PRS, all these things. We're having two meetings coming up, funded by ourselves, and this is sort of something that I wanted to work, our group wants to work with the school. So something, I don't know if you heard about the PTAC in Wallenford, they were kind of the first ones looking into that CAC. It's a partnership between the school board and the parents. One of their members actually are members as well in SNAP, because she doesn't have autism families over there. We're having more in scenes here in North Haven, but that's where I'm thinking. I have a lot of contacts, CPAC, John Flanders, that he can bring us all these trainings in here for free, you don't need to pay anybody, because it's all funded federally under IDEA. NAMI trainings for anxiety, for parents who don't know, like you know, I'm very advocate on mental health, I know what is going through anxiety, how we can train our parents at the level of, I don't know if you know as well, we got the bill passing for kids with autism to be, the transition age is now to 14 legally. But our school system has been amazing, and I've, I always started since, like you said, preschool, trying to prepare, okay, you know, get a little dose of IEP, let's see if you can make it five minutes. Now, he was able to make it 20, wow! But those are the things that I want to help the families, that we want, you know, don't be scared to talk to your teachers, let's communicate to remind, "Hey, do you need some help? I know, you know, call me, I'm available, 10 minutes at least." It's a great communication that we can do this, it's just, you know, don't be a friend either way, on either part, to talk, you know? So I'm glad, and we're going to see each other.
I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
More public comments?
I had two quick clarification questions, actually, if I could. One of them was for the policies that you guys are thinking of enacting, I know you still have to do the first read on those and everything. Mr. Stewart, you said that they were, basically you were just revamping these policies to meet state requirements? I wanted to know if those are state requirements for fingerprinting and criminal history records, like blanket-wise, or for education specifically?
We're only looking at it through the educational lens, so...
Okay, just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to be sure on that.
Like all school employees.
Right, anyone who works for the North Haven Board, yes.
Perfect, okay. And then my second question was for Jennifer. I just had a quick question. You had mentioned looking into student equity for scores, attendance in various different classes.
No, I looked student equity not for scores, well, for participation in certain level classes, yes.
Okay, that's what, okay.
How many are registering for, you know, across through? I want to look at what number we have. Do our percentages match our proportionality across racial lines?
Strictly racial lines, or all, kind of all minority lines, period? Whether that be with, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here.
EL students?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I'd like to start with racial first, yeah. That was my first priority.
Thank you so much.
Other comments? Future agenda items. Hearing none, can I have a motion to go into executive session for matters of personnel? Can I have a motion to go into executive session for matters of personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All right, favor. Oh, yes, and, and to invite Patrick.
Don't forget me.
I agree.
Okay, we're out of executive session at 7:35. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, thank you all, we're adjourned.